Well, good evening, everyone. Let's try that again. Good evening, everyone. All right, we're engaged. My name's Clint Yule. I'm the Vice President of Finance and Administrative Services here at Yavapai College, and it's my pleasure to welcome you tonight to our event and to remind you that Yavapai College is your community college. We are so pleased that this event is being held and that it's being held here at the college. We very quickly like to thank tonight's sponsors, tonight's facilitators. We'd like to thank each and every one of the candidates you see before you for their willingness to provide service to our community. And last but not least, we'd like to thank all of you for taking time out of your busy lives to come tonight and become better-informed participants of our democratic process. So, without further ado, I know you didn't come here to hear me talk, so I'm going to turn this over to Teri Fernetti of the League of Women Voters. Please join me in the background.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, friends and neighbors. My name is Teri Fernetti. I'm with the League of Women Voters. Just looking around this room, I think it's safe to say this is civic engagement. Thank you for your interest in our city, the issues, and the leadership you'd like to see in our community. Civic participation is important in every election, but this election, closest to where we live our day-to-day lives, has a more direct impact. We encourage you to use your programs, to take notes, and use them when your ballots come in the mail. The county reporter's office will be mailing the ballots the week of August 7th. As you know, this is a mail-in ballot-only election. If you've moved and have not updated your voter registration, you have until Monday, July 31st, to do so. And you can do this online easily at ServiceArizona.com. You may also go to the county reporter's office to make that change. Voting in person at Fair Street begins August 2nd through Election Day, August 29th. The question sorting committee comprised of a volunteer from each of the sponsors has been working quickly to behind the scenes with all of your questions, prioritizing them based on topics you all want to learn about. Please note that we do not allow any form of attack questions. This will be civil discourse. Ellie La Mark, who is a member of A U W and the League, is one of those volunteers. She will present the guidelines for the forum. Thank you.
Prior to coming this evening, each of the candidates received a letter outlining the rules and the guidelines for the forum. Our moderator, Sanford Cohen, who will be stepping onstage shortly, will be going over their biographical information. They will begin with a one-minute opening statement. The question committee, which was composed of representatives from the four sponsors of the panel, the Chamber of Commerce, the American Association of University Women, the League of Women Voters, and the Citizens Task Committee, sifted through probably a couple hundred postcards of questions and rated them by the top, the ones that most frequently asked questions. And we came up with, we were starting with 12 questions, which will probably be enough, but we have additional questions we may get to. The reason we sort the questions is not to have duplicates. We don't want to spend a whole hour on one topic, and we don't want to deal with isolated issues that don't pertain to the whole, the community at large. So that's one of the reasons we do this. So, the moderator will be asking each of the candidates. They will be given one minute to answer the question. We have some members from the League and the Citizens Task Committee here today who will be running a light box. And when their 45 seconds is up, they get a yellow light, is a yellow light. When their minute is up, they get the red light, and that means the time is over. At the conclusion, the moderator will have the responsibility for enforcing the time limits and ensuring that everybody has a fair opportunity to speak on the topics. At the end of the forum, candidates will be given two minutes to do a summary presentation. So without further ado, I have the secure 12 questions to give a start. Sanford Cohen is going to be our moderator. He has a background in communications, so he's definitely the right man for the job.
In the interest of full disclosure, I am here as your moderator as co-host of Talk of the Town on KQNA 1130 a.m., 99.9 FM in Prescott, 95.5 FM in Prescott Valley, and heard on the website at KQNA.com. But I'm actually here as the Board Chair of the Prescott Chamber of Commerce, so that is my full disclosure statement. So, without any further ado, let me introduce you to the candidates that are here onstage. And we'll start here at my left with Jean Wilcox. She is one of the three mayoral candidates. She has served on the City Council since 2013. She was a deputy county attorney in Arizona for 19 years and has practiced law for 35 years. She is the daughter of an Army chaplain and is married to Jeff Zucker, a longtime Prescott resident. Our next mayoral candidate is Greg Mangarelli. Greg has lived in Prescott for 22 years, having raised a family of nine children, four of whom were adopted. He oversees the Prescott U C Y C camp with a staff of 200 and a budget of $4 million. He's also president of the Prescott School Board. And Mary Beth Rinn is a former Philadelphia Assistant District Attorney and Police Officer. Her education includes a J D and an L O M in tax law. She has extensively studied, written, and lectured on P S P R S. Now, the City Council candidate, starting to my right with Steve Blair. Steve was born in Prescott, graduated from Prescott High School, Yavapai College, and ASU, and has served on the Parks and Recreation Board, the County Review Committee, Planning and Zoning, and is currently on the Prescott City Council since 2009. Next is Connie Cantelmi. Connie is a businesswoman, 14-year Prescott resident, an Air Force brat, mother and grandmother. Her son is a Phoenix firefighter. She serves on the Silver Living Homes Ad-Hoc Committee, Economic Advisory Committee, and is a new member of the Advisory and Appeals Board. Next is Phil Good. Phil is a combat Vietnam veteran awarded the Bronze Star. He's an officer in the American Legion and the V F W. Phil is the co-chair for the Silver Living Homes Committee, a commissioner on Prescott's planning and zoning, a director for Central Yavapai Hospital District, a member of C WAG, C T C, and the Sunup Rotary. Next is Alexa Scholl. Alexa is a Prescott native who wants to serve the community that raised her. She will use her youthful energy to preserve Prescott and ensure its vitality for many generations to come. And Joe Vichika. Born and raised in Pennsylvania, Joe is the son of a retired police officer and insurance agent. He has banking experience and hopes to focus on economic development to keep young people in town. And as an added note, Greg Lizell, who is also a candidate for City Council, is unable to attend the forum. He and his wife are out of town celebrating their wedding anniversary. So with that, we will go ahead and begin our forum. Each question that I ask will be answered by each candidate, and so we're going to take turns being the first answerer, and we're going to start to my left with Jean Wilcox. Jean, do you support, as written, Proposition 443? Why or why not? You have one minute.
Proposition 443. I was on the Strategic Planning Committee of the Council, which formulated that idea of a 3/4% sales tax to pay down our P S P R S obligation. I know we can pay it down. We've calculated it based on best information available, and I'm fully confident we can get the job done.
Greg Mangarelli, same question.
I do support Proposition 443. Typically, I do not like to raise taxes, but in this case, the 3/4% sales tax made sense because it has a 10-year lifespan and possibly could go away sooner if the unfunded liability is paid off early. I also looked at the fact that the sales tax keeps us below neighboring communities in terms of our total sales tax, and so I knew we needed to pay this off sooner than later, and I trust that the Council did their work. And I believe that by dedicating this new revenue stream completely to the unfunded liability, as well as what's been already going from the general fund to the unfunded liability, we can take care of this in 10 years.
I don't support 443 simply because of the ballot language. There's no way to guarantee to the taxpayer that we can pay down the liability, and that's how this has been built. The only way you can pay it down is if you use the general fund money and then use 443 revenue on top of paying your annual required contribution from the general fund. And if you cannot guarantee the taxpayer that you're going to be doing this, there's no reason we should be doing this at all. There's no one on this stage who has studied and researched and lectured on this topic more than I have, and you cannot guarantee to this taxpayer that we can pay it down using these funds. I do support a tax, not just this, just not this one.
Yes, I do support 443, and as a current sitting City Councilman, when I took the oath of office, I held my hand up and swore to uphold the laws of the federal government, the state of Arizona, and the charter in the city of Prescott. We have a judge that has told us that we need to pay our due. We need to do that and find a way to do that. The city of Prescott has taken an active role in reducing properties out there to bring them back in to the general fund to help pay down the debt. We've also looked at all the low-hanging fruit in the city's government, as well as reducing five high-paid employees at the city of Prescott. Some $500,000 we saved by doing that that will go directly into paying the debt. If we do not have the tax, what you're going to find is a diminution of the quality of life in the city of Prescott.
Okay, I guess I'll say city. I do support the 443 as well, and for all the reasons that we just heard here. One of the reasons I, in the beginning, I was very worried about the 443 and its ability to actually cover this unfunded liability in the time that we needed to do it. But I've done extensive research on this, and I do believe this is going to go a long way. I also have told many people that I just don't see the logic in sitting and waiting on the hope that the legislature, you know, might get their act together and be able to review this thing. I did a little research on the legislative body, and the last time they ever reversed themselves on anything, and it's been a very, very long time. So I don't think we can afford to sit and wait for this to happen. If it does happen, that'd be the best-case scenario, but I think we need to act now while we have a shot at getting rid of this unfunded liability. Thank you.
I do not support the tax at this time. I think it's poorly written. It doesn't guarantee that the tax money will be added to our current payment out of the general fund. It potentially can free up millions of dollars to be used for other purposes. I also believe it's ill-time. I have strong support for our state legislators, Noel Campbell and David Stringer, who are engaging the legislature in significant reform. We've already got commitments from the Number Two leadership, David Livingston in the House, and we've even heard from Steve Yarborough in the Senate that they are going to be working towards a proposal to modify the state constitution so we can get some legitimate reform in this system. I don't believe that we should be sending tax dollars that are going to be wasted, poorly invested. We need to fix the system before we commit those tax dollars to paying it off.
I do support Proposition 443, and I support Proposition 443 because I feel that if the city does not find an alternative source of funding for our unfunded liability, our city will have to continue to make cuts to our quality of life services that our Prescott residents want and deserve. With that being said, I do acknowledge that there are systemic issues with P S P R S that do need to be reformed, and I myself will be down there at this legislature when elected, working to fix those issues so that P S P R S better serves the retirees and the communities as well.
I also support 443, and the reason why is we can't discharge the $80 million that we have in the unfunded liability. We can't raise property tax more than 2%, which would equal $56,000, I think is the highest amount that we can raise for the general fund. The only other option we have is to raise sales tax. It'll bring in, an estimated, if the economy stays as it is, $10 million a year to the general fund. We won't have to make cuts to police, fire, parks, recreation, or the library. I think it's the right thing to do, and I support it.
I have an announcement. In the interest of time, the committee has asked that we hold our applause till the end of the program. Well, everybody got a chance to be applauded the first round. You guys did a great job. Thank you very much. Hold your applause till the end of you. All right, our next round of questions are, first we'll ask Greg Mangarelli. If Prop 443 does not pass, what would be your plan for the city meeting its fiscal obligations? Is bankruptcy an option?
If 443 does not pass, the city has to balance their budget annually. And so, to do this, if we don't have that additional revenue, we will have to continue to use the general fund to service the annual payment for the unfunded liability, which will continue to increase annually. And because of that, you're going to see city services likely be cut so that we can continue to have a balanced budget. So unfortunately, I think we want to make sure that we keep our essential services, public health, public safety. Those are the most important services that we provide as a city. So I think your city parks and rec, library, and those kinds of services will be cut to balance the budget. I do not support bankruptcy, and we don't qualify anyway.
If Prop 443 doesn't pass, and clearly we have to look at remodeling all of the city services provided, I'm a strong supporter in planned competition. We can put things out to bid, look at the private sector, look at fleet management, look at waste management. If they cannot compete with the private sector, the private sector takes over these departments. It's been done in other, excuse me, it's been done in other cities, and that's what we need to do here. Unless government is forced to remodel, they don't. As far as bankruptcy, at this time, you cannot just be insolvent in one area, which is public pensions. So we absolutely don't meet the statutory definition of insolvent.
I'll take it backwards. Bankruptcy isn't a legitimate option because we have enterprise funds, sewer, water, solid waste, which are very healthy funds. So when you're, when you go across the fund family, when you have all of them that are healthy except for one avenue, you can't file bankruptcy. What will we do if 443 doesn't pass? We've done it in the past. It will be a budgeting process where you have to look at how much money is coming in and where it's spent. There'll be a reduction in services. There'll be a reduction in the library. There'll be a reduction in our police and fire. That's happened already once by rounding out fire stations. It's happened with parks and recreation. The library is closed one day because of this same scenario, and do the same thing over again is pure stupidity. So I do not support that.
If Proposition 443, sorry about that, does not pass, just as everybody here has said, same thing. We're going to have to go back and take a look at the budget and prioritize where we spend this money. Obviously, we don't want to cut our services in our community where we are, you know, very heavy in the retired area, myself included. I think we do have to look, though, and take a very serious look and prioritize where this money goes. I'm in favor of everybody equally. If we have to take a haircut, I don't think it's fair just to hang it all on the library. And I know I had some, a discussion this afternoon with a few ladies that were big advocates for the library. I do want to make it understand, I am also, but as I've said in past forums, we are going to have to do exactly what we're going to have to do. And if it comes down to that, every citizen in this room and in Prescott will be able to take a look and decide at what needs to go. And unfortunately, I think we may have to hit every department. Thank you.
If Proposition 443 does not pass, the city currently has substantial financial resources to deal with this growing liability. We have a general fund of $39 million. We currently have $30 million in reserves. We have to maintain a statutory 20% reserve ratio, which is about $8 million. That leaves us $22 million in rainy day funds, and I don't know about you, but I think it's sprinkling. We can use those funds to pay and maintain our current services. We're adequately staffed in police and fire. Our crime statistics have actually gone down in the last year. Our police, our fire department is adequate. We have had never less than $30 million in our capital improvement budget. We can tap that through borrowing. We can't spend it directly, but with those substantial financial resources, we can deal with the issue.
If Proposition 443 fails, we will have to continue to fund our P S P R S payments out of the general fund. And with that being said, we will probably see cuts to our city services. However, I would like to take a look at alternative forms of funding and just being creative and think outside of the box in terms of how we can fund our city services, looking at private-public partnerships, grants, and just being, you know, in tough times, you have to kind of be creative in the way that you solve your problems. So I'd like to see us not necessarily have to make cuts, but try to be creative before having come down to make cuts.
If 443 does not pass, we're, the truth is, we're going to have to make more cuts to services. That's not a threat. Police, fire, public safety, library, all of them are going to be cut further. And I know I threw this out the last forum that I was at. In the fiscal year 2017 budget book, the police department had 25,000 calls for service. They have 68 police officers. Can we afford to make more cuts? I don't think we can. We've already, they don't get to take a leave in the summer. I know my father was a police officer, and I've said it once before as well. We, we went on vacations, we went fishing, we went camping. In the summer right now, police and fire can't do that, and it's a shame.
Sis Ann? Okay, thank you. If 443 does not pass, we will have to take a look at cutting general fund services. We do not need to cut services that are funded by your utility rates. So the question of privatizing sewer, water, solid waste is off the table. I cannot imagine privatizing police and fire services. Police and fire are fundamental public safety functions of government, and they must be supported by taxes. So what we're going to have to do as a council is, as Councilman Blair said every year, look at the budget and decide what our priorities are. We can use our general fund reserves to some extent, but if we go too far, we will damage our credit rating, and bankruptcy is not an option. We are solvent. It's simply the general fund that has a problem and needs additional revenue.
All right, our next question is for Mary Beth Rinn, and it is our last question on Proposition 443, just in case, because there's three in a row. Just wanted to make sure, you know, we are going to tackle some other subjects. So, Mary Beth, if Proposition 443 passes, what would you propose be done with the general funds currently used for P S P R S? Would you advocate using reserves?
You need to rephrase that, because you're saying, I need you to repeat that question.
If Proposition 443 passes, what would you propose be done with the general funds currently used for P S P R S? Would you advocate using reserves?
You mean what should be used? I'm going to answer the question, I think, I heard. If 443 passes, because the way it's been built, it was to pay down our pension liability. As I said before, the only way to pay down the pension liability is we continue to pay our annual required contribution, our pension bill, from the general fund, and then use the 443 money along with paying that. That is the only way to attack this and pay down our liability. There's no freed-up money now from the general fund for the other. You can't do both. You can't free up money from the general fund to be used for other things and then actually pay down the pension liability.
No, I got it. First of all, there isn't $30 million in the general fund. There's 15.5 million of unrestricted money in the general fund. $5 million of that is paper money that has to do with the debt at the golf course. So in real reality, we have about $10 million in the general fund that can be used. The bottom line to it is, if Proposition 443 passes, it's been advocated and stated before that the 1.5, that's the general payment, plus the accelerated payment of somewhere around $6 million. So if you want to look at round numbers, talk about $8 million plus the 11 suspected dollars from the tax, now you have $19 million. Now you're talking about real money. And if we advocate a $5 million coming out of the fund, the safe fund, we're now paying down about $24 million. That takes that debt one quarter down, and this debt can be paid in four and a half to five years, and then the money goes back to the people. Thank you.
I would do exactly that. I would take the payment and the money from the 443, as well as whatever we can loosen up in the general fund and put it on there. I have tried to explain to people a very good analogy that a lot of people understand if you own a home, is the difference between a 30-year mortgage and a 15-year mortgage. If you pay your house off in 15 years, it doesn't change the price of the home. The reason you're paying it off early is you're paying off that interest early, and I think this is very important, and we definitely need to do that to get a handle on it.
If 443 were to pass, I would still advocate utilizing those reserve funds. All the major bond rating agencies consider 15% to 20% as a prudent reserve, and they would give it the highest bond rating. So we don't have a risk about having our bonds, if we needed bonding, to have higher rates. Granted, we do have some designated possibilities for some additional reserves, but they are still reserves. $16 million right now is considered unassigned or undesigned. That can be tapped. And when you realize, if we put that money towards that unfunded liability, then our liability payment is going to be reduced. So we, as we pay it down, our bill from P S P R S is going to be reduced. We then, over time, would have the ability to restore some of those funds if needed. We then, over time, would have the ability to restore some of those funds if needed. So I would support probably as much as $11 million coming from the reserve funds, and we would get substantial paydown quickly.
If Proposition 443 passes, I will advocate for continuing to make our annual payment out of the general fund and then add that money from 443 in addition to the payment from the general fund, just so that we can pay down our unfunded liability quicker, therefore it being cheaper, which I think is the best option.
So 443 passes, we, like Alexa said, we need to continue making a payment out of the general fund. As far as reserves, the question is about reserves. And we need to be smart about how much money we pull from the reserves. I think we, it might be a good idea to do that, but we have to keep enough in there that if the economy drops, we can pay for services in the city.
If 443 passes, I would be in favor of using some of the general fund that would otherwise go to paying down the debt to advance payments to PS PRS, but not all. And that decision has to be made on a year-by-year basis by the council, looking at our annual priorities and what kind of needs we have each year. There are unanticipated things that happen. We don't have a crystal ball, and we can't stand up here and honestly commit to using the entire amount of our general fund that would otherwise go to PS PRS. We also need to remember that we made a lot of cuts as a council in fiscal year 2016. We browned out fire stations. We have some firefighter positions restored based on a temporary SAFER grant, and we need to get those positions permanently restored. That would come from the general fund. Same with the police department.
If 443 passes, I would like to use all the money that we've been using in the general fund to pay down the unfunded liability in addition to the new revenue that would be created by Proposition 443. In other words, I'd like to see this paid off as quickly as possible, finding any amount of money that we could to get this paid off soon. I will say that public health and safety is extremely important. And so year to year, you're going to have to look at whether you might need some of that general fund money just to maintain public health and safety, clean water, wastewater, fire, and police. And I believe that you can't necessarily promise you're going to continue to use that same general fund money year to year to pay down the unfunded liability. For instance, like Jean mentioned with the SAFER grant, when that goes away, we need to make sure that we don't have brownouts in the future. And so I would advocate for paying this off as quickly as possible.
All right, our next question, we'll start with Steve Blair. What priority do you put on open space? How would you decide when to purchase more open space?
Always love this question. We have more forest than we know all around us. In the past years that I've been on council, we have strategically purchased very important properties in the city of Prescott, most generally central around granite dells and the lakes to preserve the shorelines and those types of things. In the past five, six years, I think everybody out there recognizes that our trail program has been accelerated, eco-environment has been accelerated, and that can't happen without open space. I am an open space advocate, but only when the time is right. We have three-plus million dollars in the safe, so to speak, earmarked for open space, and that should only be used when we have priority projects that come about. And one of them is the granite dells property that's out there right now if it comes for sale. I would advocate putting that into the city's portfolio.
I too am a big advocate for open space. That's part of the allure that we all have and the reason that we're here in Prescott, Arizona. But I understand, again, this is something, if we cannot service it and take care of it for the next seven to 10 years while we deal with this unfunded liability, I would not be in favor of purchasing anything at this time. It makes no sense to me. But again, I think it's very important that we may, you know, we've got to get over this bump in the road right now, and we're going to have to sit back. If I was asked if I would buy open space tomorrow, I would say no. Let's sit back and wait and see what happens with this Prop 443. But again, it's a very high priority for me, and I'm really hoping that as time goes on, we'll be able to dedicate the funds to that.
Well, open space is a valuable commodity for the city. It's an attractive component of our tourism. So we've completed the Circle Trail. We do have $3.8 million available for open space acquisition. I think in this challenging fiscal environment we're going to be dealing with over the next 10 years at least, acquiring open space also means we're acquiring the liability for it. So I would be reluctant to use that, but I wouldn't rule it out. If we had a really great parcel that was available at a really great price, then I would not be reluctant to utilize that remaining dollars. But it would have to be the right property at the right price.
Open space is a very high priority for me, and it's because it's incredibly important to many environmental, cultural, and historical aspects of our community here in Prescott. And so I think it's important that we are actively trying to acquire open land, but also acknowledge that we do have financial burdens right now, and so is, and making sure that we're purchasing open land and would make good use of it and also are able to maintain it. So I'd only support acquiring open space if there's a purpose for it and if it was a great price and the right time for the community.
Open space should be and is a large priority for the city of Prescott. We have $3.8 million delegated out for open space acquisition, and it's a large part of our tourism. People come up from Phoenix, they buy things up here, and they come up here for Watson-Willa Lake, they come up for Thumbut. I trained for the rim-to-rim, the Grand Canyon rim-to-rim using Thumbut. I think it's incredibly important. We should use $3.8 million that we have for acquisition.
I place a high priority on open space. It's a big part of our quality of life and the reason we live here. If you look at the general plan that was approved by the voters in 2015, you can see that Prescott is going to grow northward, and the core of our city will be the granite dells. It will be like our Central Park, the one place where we can go, enjoy nature, hike the trails, and just be a part of something bigger than ourselves. That $3.8 million, by the way, is from the open space sales tax that was approved by the voters for streets and open space. There was a remaining amount that was set aside by the council for the purpose of future acquisitions. We have some on the table, as Steve said. It's going to be very exciting and open up a whole new trail system. But most importantly, I think we need to complete that 2009 open space plan and the connectivity between the layers.
Thank you.
Well, I think open space is extremely important to our city. I think it's probably largely why many of us moved to Prescott. I know for myself, I enjoy mountain biking on the trails that we have around town, and the lakes offer lots of great opportunities as well. We have lots of Forest Service land that surrounds us, and so I think we're in a great position right now. But I also believe that if the right property came available and we had the money available, as long as it didn't create a maintenance issue or an added expense that was out of line with our budget. So I would be a proponent of open space, but it really largely depends on what happens with 443 as well to see kind of how that plays out. But I think open space really contributes a lot to our character and our charm of our city, and also brings lots of people out of town to Prescott, which is part of our economic generator.
The great thing about going last, you can say, I just agree with everyone up here, they're wonderful. The purchase of open space really should continue when it's the appropriate time. I definitely support if we can continue with completing trails. Another interesting thing is the purchase of easements, anything that we can do exactly like Jean said, in the areas that, in the northern part of the city. So we have the funds that are available, and when we see a good opportunity to do it, I definitely support it.
All right, our next question starts with Connie Cantelme. And Connie, the question is, what are your ideas to promote economic development in Prescott, particularly to create opportunities for young families?
Well, that's pretty obvious for me. As I've said in the past, I have four brothers, and out of my four brothers, three of them stayed in Prescott and were married and had children here and raised their kids here. The unfortunate thing is not one of them have been able to stay here. They're educated, there's no high-paying jobs for them. We have not, I think the city's been remiss in not tapping into these students that are coming out of these colleges, in particular, Emory Riddle. I think we've got an opportunity now and some people in place at the city that are looking into every avenue we can do to try to keep that. I've reminded people, as much as we are a retirement community, we're not a whole city without our kids here. We need these millennials. They are our future, and they do much to enhance our life. So I think that's a very important thing that we have not done in Prescott to date, and we've got to look into that in a very big way.
Well, I think there's two components to that issue, affordable housing and good jobs. We have approved a number of multifamily housing developments in the city. I've looked at a number of those projects on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are increasing the number of available units, and that should drive down the rental costs. We have less than a 4% vacancy rate in the city. But we also need to have the professional-type jobs that our young people can be able to have, income that they can raise a family on. So I strongly support economic development, especially in those areas where we're talking about high-tech, cybersecurity, global security, some of the great graduates from Emory Riddle. So if we can support incubation of technology and attract some of these businesses, we can solve both issues.
As a Prescott native and college-age person, I am literally at ground zero of the mass exportation of young people in our community. When I was getting ready to graduate high school, many of my peers were graduating, leaving, and never going to come back. They didn't feel that there were professional opportunities for them to live here in the community that they could afford to buy a home and raise their family here. So that is one of the big reasons I decided to run for council, and one of my passions is to create opportunities for our young people. I think our city has taken a step in the right direction with hiring Jim Robb, and he is our economic development consultant, and he has worked tirelessly to bring tech industry here into Prescott. But I personally feel that our city cannot be making decisions that will effectively help our young people until there is someone under the age of 30 on our city council. That's why I'm running.
I agree. So I came to Prescott in 2012 for Emory Riddle. It's, I wanted to fly planes. I have a pilot's license now, and that's what brought me here. But we got to a point last year that I was having a going-away party for friends that I went to school with about once every two months, except for a small stretch in between April and July. We're not trying to focus to keep young people here, and I think we could do that by targeting Emory Riddle for their graduating classes. The largest graduating class Emory Riddle has ever had left last year, 2% of the graduates stayed here in Prescott, 2%. We need an incubation center that people can innovate and grow in our community and grow with us.
In the strategic planning sessions that the council held last September, we realized that we were missing many opportunities for growing our economy, and one of those is in the high-tech industries. We are not developing a positive relationship, a productive relationship with Emory Riddle University, but the doors have been opened. We hired a consultant named Jim Robb who's making those connections, and we are waiting to see just how it's going to flourish. We're currently working with APS on opening a business incubation center downtown that will provide space for young people, anyone, to bring their ideas, develop them, see if they can be tested in a market, and connect them with investors. One of the problems for young people here is that they have no place to go up. They might be able to start their own business, but they need the opportunity to build that business and to move upward like all the rest of us have done.
Well, I was fortunate in 1995, when I first came to town, I was only 28, and I was there with my young family and had the opportunity to live and work in Prescott. And I realize that's kind of unique, but I feel very blessed to have had that opportunity. So I understand what it looks like to live and work and raise a family in Prescott. I would agree that with our colleges and universities, we need to figure out how to retain the bright talent that we export every year from our colleges and universities in town. I would support the incubation idea to have the resources available for the students to have ideas and dreams and want to start a business to help them make that a reality. And so I think that's a large part of what we could do economically to get these jobs and these young families here. I do believe that city government can create an environment that's conducive for businesses to start and grow and thrive, but they don't create jobs.
Thank you.
I'm not going to repeat all of these other great ideas, but Bill Gates, what made him so successful is he actually went to the junior colleges, and he actually started an associate's degree in coding that doesn't even exist here. So we actually, actually have to just not only concentrate on Emory Riddle, we actually have to concentrate on this college. There's not an associate degree here for coding. So if you'd like your grandchildren to visit you, how about if they actually came here and got an associate degree in coding? These jobs pay about $85,000. They could actually visit you, go to school, or even actually live here. So these are the kind of things we have to do and start thinking outside the box to attract young families here.
Now, I think this is an age-old question, that how do we retain our youth? And when I graduated from high school, of course, I left. Not much to do in Prescott in 1979. I think the opportunity for jobs now has grown quite a bit, and we're working hard at bringing in commerce to the airport. And I think before you can generate higher-paying jobs, you have to have a way to move people, especially executives and folks that are from outside the region. We need a viable airline that can do that. We need to bring commerce into the community at the airport. I think that we're working towards different things with Yopai College, as well as Yopai Community Hospital to bring in higher-paying jobs. We all know, and probably sitting around in the audience, people that have struggled fighting healthcare professionals, whether it be doctors, dentists, or lawyers. I think we need to focus on being partners with Yopai College and with Yopai Regional Medical Center to also look at those fields as well. And those are underway right now in the city of Prescott.
All right, our next question, we'll start with Phil Good. Phil, what do you see as the needs at the airport to support economic development?
Well, I'm a strong supporter of upgrading and modernizing our airport. In about 2011, I considered moving my business to Prescott, because at the time, I felt that I could probably commute from Prescott Airport down to LAX and then reach the 17 states that I manage for a large healthcare company in the medical device industry. However, due to some federal regulations, the reliability of that commuting service was significantly degraded, and I had to put that plan on hold. But that just shows you that businesses need commuting capability to be able to build their businesses, expand their businesses. So we need to strengthen and lengthen the run rates, we need to upgrade and modernize our terminals and other facilities. So I would strongly support that in addition to being able to provide, quite frankly, good commercial service for residents. It's a long way to get to LAX from Prescott than it is from Skyargo.
There are three basic reasons why I support airport expansion. Number one is jobs. It provides a lot of opportunities to bring high-paying jobs into the area. More and more young people are looking for a place that they can work, live, and play. And with technology and the ability to... ability to do a lot of work on the computer, that airport expansion opens the door for telecommuting and being able to fly to LA, up to the Bay Area, and other large cities so that they can continue to work here in Prescott. The second reason I support airport expansion is for public safety reasons. Now more than ever, we just saw with the Goodwin Fire, the importance of keeping our Slurpee bombers at our airport. And it's incredibly hard on our runway right now when they take off. So strengthening and lengthening our runway would help in terms of public safety. And third is just convenience. I'm tired of driving up and down the I-17 to get to the airport, and frankly, it's getting more and more dangerous. So those are the three reasons I would support airport expansion.
I also support expanding the airport. We need a world-class terminal to welcome people to our world-class city. The local terminal that we have now is outdated. I think that we should retain the history of it, but we should be looking forward to bringing another airline that we could attract jobs, we could attract growth. We have Emory Riddle. We have Guidance. We have other companies that are training great pilots. And people like Prescott, they want to stay here. We should focus on the airport for that.
I also support expanding the airport, improving it. We need longer runways, stronger runways, in order to have larger planes that can carry the goods and services and people that we need to build our economy here in Prescott. But we don't need to create another Sky Harbor Airport. We do need a regional airport that involves participation of all of the communities surrounding us. And to this end, I think we need to seek legislation that authorizes the creation of an airport authority so that we can share in the financial responsibility. And it's not just on the backs of the Prescott taxpayers.
I would support bringing regional jet service to Prescott. I think it's very important for our local economy, especially if we want to have high-paying jobs in tech, cyber tech, and security. So I think it's essential to get our local economy moving. There's lots of federal and state dollars available to lengthen and strengthen the runway. And we could also do a public-private partnership to get the terminal up to speed and totally redone, for that matter. And so I would fully support having regional jet service here in Prescott for all the economic reasons, as well as just for bringing tourism to town and for our own convenience, so we don't have to drive to Phoenix any longer to catch a jet.
Again, I agree with everyone here. CEOs need to move in and out. We're not going to tax away, and the pension board isn't going to invest their way out of this. We need to expand the tax base in order to get Prescott out of this pension mess. It's really pivotal that we start bringing CEOs in here. Wildfires are a big concern. So the terminal needs to be built first. But here's a problem with the expansion of it. The maintenance facility is lacking. We can't bring these bigger jets in here. So that's another concern to look at. It's something that people need to be aware of. It's just not the terminal. But once that's built, the FAA grants, they said they would come in there and take care of the lengthening and the expansion of the runway. So I think that's critical. We do the terminal first, and there are people, investors here, that are really willing to step up to the plate and get us started on that.
Well, it's been a long time coming, and I think the airport is absolutely an economic driver. Over the past, we were unable to lure in the Arizona Cardinals that wanted to move their training camp to Prescott, but we didn't have a way to move them. Air movement, we had no way to do that. We also had an opportunity to bring in a minor league baseball team to Prescott, and we ended up with the same problem once again. No credentialed air company that would keep their times and be on schedule. So therefore, it created a huge problem. We do have a contract with Forest Service, which is a vital group of people that provide us with safety out there. We need to enlarge the runway, thicken the runway. We need to bring in those folks to make sure that we are all safe here in Prescott. And I think once that's all done, I think we'll bring in all kinds of different people that want to relocate in Prescott. But I think we need to do it the right way, and I think we're doing that right now.
I don't know if it's appropriate to say ditto, but I definitely absolutely agree with everybody. This is another part of the puzzle to becoming a very vital and alive city and a successful city financially. We've got to have this. This is a situation, I believe, that if we build it, they will come. We will get those dollars. But I have heard it said many times, especially from the group AOPA that came here and had their fly-in, I think it was called last year. I met with several of those people. And I think they're waiting for Prescott to step forward and make this move in good faith. And when this does actually happen, I think many, many doors are going to open up for us. So this is just a win-win for everybody. But I do want to also say one other thing real quick. My son is a firefighter. He fought the Goodwin Fire out there. And there was a tanker that was in Tucson. I know it was mired up in some inspections and things like that. But even if that tanker had been able to come here and help these guys, we could have not accommodated that tanker here with that runway.
Thank you.
So we do need the airport.
All right, our next question will be for Alexa Scholl. Alexa, what will be the economic impacts on Prescott's services due to nearby mining development, specific to heavily loaded vehicle traffic on Pioneer Parkway?
The Kirkland Mine was just brought up in our last council meeting, and there has been discussion about the impacts that that mine will have on specifically our infrastructure here in Prescott. Those heavily loaded trucks, right now, the plan is that they'll be driving on Iron Springs and turning on Williamson Valley. And so that will have an impact on our infrastructure. So the Kirkland Mine is something that the city does need to be active in, making sure that we're involved in what's going on and know the game plan. And if so, maybe get some assistance in our infrastructure, because it's definitely going to take a toll.
If the Kirkland Mining Company is going to be using our roads, we should be getting some sort of reimbursement for those trucks and what the damage is going to be on our roads. They're going to come up there, go right up Pioneer Parkway, all the way up Williamson Valley Road. It's going to pass it by a Judd. We should be mindful of that and make sure that if they are, they're giving the city something to reimburse for the damage to our road system.
Well, the council recently considered a letter, approved a letter to send to BLM commenting on the Kirkland Mine. And in that letter, we identified several impacts that would happen to Prescott, not just the wear and tear on our roads, but traffic congestion close to an elementary school where parents are going in and out, dropping off and picking up children. And also the possible environmental impacts from dust that would fall off the trucks and be airborne, some of which are known carcinogens. I think we need to understand a lot more about what the traffic pattern of the mine will be, the mine trucks. They don't have a firm plan yet. I would like to know why they can't use the railroad which runs through Kirkland Junction to the Drake Cement Plant, or also runs down to Phoenix, if that's where their sellers or buyers are.
Well, I think partnerships are very, very important. I think it's key that we have strong partnerships, not just with local municipalities, but as well with businesses and developments that are happening in our city. And this would be a great case for a partnership where we need to get around the table with these folks, talk about our concerns and the issues that we have in our city and the impacts it'll have, and work on the front end to make sure that those are all mitigated, that they have clear understanding of what those are, and that we try to find solutions to work around these issues that might come up in our city.
Greg makes an excellent point. I met with a woman who has a lease on that mine. She was not interested in causing a huge problem. I think if the city contacts her, I think she will be willing to sit down and mitigate as many problems. It is a hot-button issue. I don't believe that she wishes to cause harm to the communities. It is the mine that she has the lease on through BLM, and I think maybe that we need to get conversment, those who are involved and things like that. But I don't think that she is not willing to meet with the community. That has not been my impression with her.
I think this is a very important thing. I'm not sure how much Kirkland Mine cares about the quality of life anywhere. But I would state that, knowing that Drake Cement Plant, and when they opened up, they had many, many community meetings and brought folks aboard based upon the known things of what they were going to do out there. The Kirkland Mine, there's a lot of unknown things that they're going to be doing out there. This is a process that's going to take place of educating folks. And I would agree, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put trucks on the county roads and tear those up, as well as in the city of Prescott, when you have a railhead. And rails move freight and heavy-gauge material a lot better than trucks can, knowing that that railway goes right to the Drake Plant. So I think there needs to be a process that they're working on, and I think we need to stay tuned and just find out what the heck they are doing.
I agree. Understand the impact, the economic impact of the Kirkland Mine. I would be completely supportive, but not at the cost of our health in this city. I think that this needs to be investigated. As a cancer survivor, and also a cancer survivor that came and spoke before the council last week, there's a thing called silicosis, I believe, that can be generated from what's in the air and it can blow into our city. These are things that I take very, very seriously. Putting money aside, yeah, it'd be great if all that checks out and it turns out that there is no problem and we don't need to worry about that. I would also look at possibly an impact fee. If they're going to use our roads, they've got to be able to pay for that. But above all, I think our health is number-one concern.
I'm opposed to this project. What I've seen so far indicates that the benefits to the city and the county are minimal and the risks are extreme. The impact on our roads, we're talking about 85 round trips per day, 10 hours a day, five days a week for 10 years. This is a massive impact on our roads, Iron Springs, Williamson Valley, and turning right there to buy a Judd. The way this is proposed so far, I think it's a bad, bad deal. I appreciate private property rights, but they have to be balanced on what the impact is to the community. And I think the scales are way out of tilt. If there was some way to demand that they use rail access to get it up to Drake, that might be a different situation. But from what I've seen so far, I'm against this.
All right, now, you guys have been behaving really well up until now. So no more huzzas and everything else. Save it for the end. Otherwise, we're going to have to reduce the amount of time they talk, and you don't want to do that. All right, Joe, you get the first question this round. Are you in favor of building the Big Chino Pipeline? Yes or no? And if yes, how should it be funded?
So as of right now, I heard a no out there. I am not in favor of building the Big Chino Pipeline. I think in 2020, when we get a study back to understand how much it will affect the headwaters of the Verde River, we should wait to see what that study returns to us so we understand that effect. Beyond the effect, the cost, I've heard 75 million, 150 million, up to $300 million for a pipeline out to the Big Chino. I think we could focus on conservation here in town before we go to that expansion, before we try to spend the money. We're having a hard time finding money for $80 million for a public works project like that. It could be even tougher. And now, we do own almost half of the rights with Prescott Valley. So when we decide to go do that Prescott Valley, we'll also have to bring up some money for that.
I would like to wait and see what our studies show us, whether or not pumping out of the Big Chino will deplete the upper Verde River watershed. And if we can develop a mitigation system where we can resupply the water where we are withdrawing, then it might be a good idea to tap the Big Chino. How to pay for it is a bigger problem. The estimates on the cost are $200 to $300 million. Yes, we could issue bonds, but how do you pay the bondholders? That's going to have to be paid by the ratepayers of the water users. And that's not just the city of Prescott. That would be Prescott Valley and Chino Valley as well.
Well, currently, there's a study that's happening. There's a lot of modeling and monitoring of those wells. There's a lot we still don't know that's yet to come out of those studies. And so I'm going to wait and see to see what actually the study tells us. I think it's a very long-range solution, if a solution exists, with the Big Chino Pipeline down the road. So I, at this point, am waiting to see what the studies will conclude, and then I think we take the next steps from there.
We've made an agreement with SRP, and Prescott Valley are a partner in this project, that we will not impact the Verde River. So we will wait till those studies are completed. But we need, at this point, to import water in order for us to meet safe yield. But I am in support of the Chino Valley, the Chino River project. And I believe that there are private investors out there. They're looking for strong returns, safe returns, and I do not believe we will have to go to the Prescott taxpayer in order to finance this project.
Well, the city of Prescott has a legal right to pump the water adjudication through the court system. At some point in time, we're going to have to bring water into the city of Prescott. Question becomes how, when, and how much is it going to cost? The study is ongoing right now with SRP for another three years. I would advocate letting SRP be our water provider, and we don't have to mess with it. It's going to be a big struggle bringing that pipeline in. It's going to be expensive. And Gene's right, the ratepayers, without a doubt, will pay it. It probably needs to be a two-tier system, one that everybody pays a small share for, and then the higher-tier system, new growth would have to pay the bigger cost of the pipeline, because they are the ones putting the impact on our infrastructure.
I agree with that. I do believe that if the study comes back, I think a lot of this is going to be based on what's going to come out of that study. Obviously, the upper Verde is a very important entity, and we need to make sure we preserve that. One thing I have said, though, I am in favor of holding water. I've said this before. We have a very high water table in the city of Prescott currently. It is cyclical. If we had a way to harness that and hold that water in those years that we had an abundance of water, I think it would benefit us. What I've said is we can't stop these people from coming here. They are going to come, but we've got to be ahead of the curve and plan for this now. And I don't think the city of Prescott has to be the sole provider of the funds. It's going to have to come from many places. There's impact fees, there's user fees, there's a joint partnership with Prescott Valley. And as Mary Beth Rinn said, we do have investors that might be interested. So in the interest of not making any one person have to hold this dime, it'd be nice to be able to bring in a lot of people and be able to satisfy our need for water, because people are coming here. Thank you.
We do own the rights to the Big Chino Water Ranch, along with Prescott Valley, who has about 46% of those rights. We have to wait for sure until the Salt River Project study is completed. So we will find out whether we're building one pipeline or two pipelines, because we may need to mitigate the water coming from the impact of the flow of the Verde River. So that has to be done. But in the meantime, I think there is a strong case to be made for regional water authority. We know we've got a partner in Prescott Valley. The Chino Valley is impacted by this, as is the county. We are having unrestricted wells being dropped into the Sakufer that are draining the aquifer while we're trying to come up with a solution. So with an authority, I think we're going to be able to get all the players together, come up with a long-term plan, be able to engage potential private investors, potentially float a bond, and then put a long-term plan together.
As of now, I do not support the Big Chino Pipeline for several reasons. First and foremost, we do need to wait for the Salt River Project study to show the impact on the Verde headwaters. That's most important, to make sure we know what we're getting into before building this pipeline. Secondly, I think we can focus more effort on conservation to make sure that we are having enough water, especially with rainwater harvesting. I think that's something that we should focus on. And lastly, the projected expense for the Big Chino Pipeline is incredibly high. And with our current financial situation, I think it would be a mistake to go ahead and build that pipeline. that pipeline.
All right, we're going to go back here to our left, starting with Gene Wilcox. The next question, what would your plans be for family-focused recreation activities such as swimming and picnic games?
Well, I would like to see a swimmable lake in Prescott. I think the best candidate is Goldwater Lake. It's the highest lake, it's the cleanest lake, and we could build a beach there and operate a swimming beach, just like the state parks do in Arizona. As far as other family-focused activities, I think we do need more playgrounds, more places for kids to be kids. Our Parks and Recreation Program can offer more activities for kids. We can just enable a lot of opportunities for nonprofit organizations, as we are doing now, by providing space and helping them with marketing and advertising. Thank you.
I'd be in favor of more family-friendly activities at town, raising nine children. That's always helpful. I would say that we have lots of great opportunities in our city for families. I've been a part of many of those, many that are not city-funded or operated. And so AYSO and Little League and all these different activities that my kids have been in have been very helpful for our family. And so I think rather than look to city government, I would look to the community and try to figure out with partnerships, again, how the community can help provide those kinds of activities as opposed to looking to the city government.
I agree with Greg completely. There are a lot of things that are sponsored through these community nonprofits that do things, we see them down at the high school, sometimes on the square. And I have a difficult time where people always look to the government to provide things. I think we do provide some things through the park system, but always to continue to look for the government, that's not my first choice.
Well, growing up in Prescott, there wasn't a whole lot to do other than staying out of a police car, but I think nowadays, we have a lot to offer out there, a lot of it's in the private sector. And a lot is offered by ASYO, Little League. I think every time you turn around, kids have five or six different things to do. I agree, I don't think it necessarily is up to government to provide those things. I think we provide the opportunity and the avenues for people to do that. We used to have a very attractive recreation department in the city of Prescott, but due to cuts in our general fund, we had to lay off seven people and do away with most of those programs when we had our budget cuts. So you have to make priority one, what you want to achieve in the community. We have a great trail system, we've opened the door to all those different things for people to do around the community. We have the park system that has several lakes where there's camping available. I think you've got to make your own enjoyment.
Well, as a member of a very large family with thirty-two members in my immediate family, between my brothers, my sisters, and all the kids, I am absolutely supporting anything we can do to keep these kids in good, clean fun. But I don't think it's a problem for the government either. I think this is another perfect opportunity for entrepreneurialism. I was an entrepreneur, I've been an entrepreneur for thirty-five years. This is what we need to do with our youth. I'm sure there is some person out there that graduated from those colleges that is eager and ready to open something like this once they recognize the need. The other thing, the other part of this growth that we need and to tap into this youth is tapping into our elders. There's an organization called SCORE, I've been a big proponent of that. Why can't some of you retired executives, myself included, take some of these kids with these great ideas and help them out? And I would like to be part of that, opening that up and providing an opportunity for these people to get together, like a meeting of the minds.
Well, I think we have a very adequate, if not superior, amount of recreational amenities available in Prescott. I don't think it's a function of government to expand those kinds of things. I believe in limited government, and if there's a niche that can be provided, that's a perfect opportunity for private enterprise to come in and bring additional recreational amenities to our community. So I think we should be proud of what we have, we'll need to maintain it, but I'm not in favor of expanding it beyond where we are today. I think it's great.
Lately, our city has shown interest in attracting young people into our community, and part of attracting young people in our community is offering family-friendly events and things to do around our community. So with that being said, I believe that it's an opportunity for public-private partnerships so that we can have family-friendly events downtown and all over Prescott in conjunction with the city of Prescott. One thing I'd like to see that has been, something that has kind of popped up on my radar, is our Fourth of July celebration. It used to be at Pioneer Park, and it used to be free, and you could bring in food, and it has changed recently, where it can cost a lot for a family on a fixed income to take their children down to the Fourth of July celebration. So I think there is a role for government in providing family-friendly opportunities, especially if we want to attract young people. And I think it's another opportunity to partner with our local schools in determining what would be attractive to those families.
You know, when we talk about attracting young people to Prescott, we're looking for people to come here, to build their family, to grow with us. And thinking about the trails, the first thing I could think of for a public partnership would be with Prescott College. I think if we could design parks that are water-friendly, that are not going to cost the city a whole lot of money, just because we don't have it in the budget for us, I think that's a great idea. You know, Lynx Lake, I love passing families on Lynx Lake, and a lot of them are from Phoenix nowadays, but it's really nice, I think we should focus more on it.
All right, our next question, we'll start with Greg Mangarelli. Greg, what is your approach to planning to set aside homes and land for affordable housing?
Well, I think it's important that we have housing that's available for young families and that it is affordable in our community. Many times, we see currently that a lot of these people are living outside of Prescott and commuting in. And so I think there's a lot already underway in the city that the council has already enacted to help get those housing developments in place. There's lots of federal funding available to help subsidize that housing, to make sure that it is affordable. And so I feel like we already have a lot of that in the pipeline, so to speak, and the city council is heading in the right direction.
I personally do not think the government should have any role in housing. I come from the city of Philadelphia, where it was social engineering through housing, and it left disastrous effects. And so for the city government to come in and try to engineer housing, it just doesn't work. It does not mean I'm not in favor of planning its own, we absolutely need that. But for a city government to say, this is the kind of housing that we need to put in a certain spot, I think it's way beyond the pale of what a city government should do. We can attract and try to bring developers in, but it is up to them on how they want to do it. And the market will show what works for a city, but it's not the role of government.
The problem with affordable housing, you have to look at two different scopes, is whether, number one, it's home or occupied, owned, or whether it's a rental facility. Apartments on Willow Creek Road are being built, they're HUD-funded, that means they're going to be subsidized by the government, that means they're not going to be very expensive. However, when you get into the private sector and you have a new group come in, like on Willow Creek Road, that are going to be building affordable housing, quote, "affordable housing," they're only affordable one time. Because as the market increases, so do the values of those homes. So unless you get into strong government and restricting those people for what they can sell their houses for, that affordable housing element goes out the window after the first sale. And knowing the Prescott environment and how housing costs have gone up, you can bet that's what's going to happen at the next development.
I agree with Steve wholeheartedly. That's what I did for thirty-five years as a builder. I built, and things don't pencil out, they will not build them. This is market-driven, we've got to understand that. I have said before, we're very lucky in Prescott because we have Prescott Valley. It's a bedroom community and people do commute. It's an unfortunate thing, but as the market starts to go up with the real estate, the builders are not going to be able to pencil out and make it worthwhile to do workforce housing. I do think we need it, but again, it's market-driven, and I just don't know, a lot of builders that are going to come in here, nor do we want what they call "blow and go" in the field. You know, they can throw up a very cheap and expensive apartment complex and satisfy the need for workforce housing, but what's the cost to Prescott on that? I'm not in favor of that, although, again, we do need the workforce housing, and I hope in some way we can satisfy that. But right now, it just doesn't pencil out.
I also agree that the market will solve these problems if we give them the opportunity. Because of the very limited number of rental facilities and apartments, we're seeing developers coming in and putting together projects that will relieve that. To have government come in and try to subsidize this is always a bad idea. We certainly don't have the funds in the city to do such subsidies, and I wouldn't touch the strings that the federal government applies to these things. So let the market deal with it, and we will see an increase in multifamily units, and that'll drive down the cost. It's a simple situation, supply and demand. With more units, you'll get a lower rate, and we'll be able to have more affordability. And in the meantime, for young families, PV is a good place to start.
My philosophy on affordable housing is if we really do want to attract young people into our community, currently, housing prices are high, and rentals are expensive and very difficult to find, so there's not a whole lot of opportunities for young people to even come into this community unless they live in Prescott Valley or Chino Valley. So I would be interested in looking at potential for high-density housing, I think would solve some of our issues. And again, it ties back to attracting young people and the vision we want for Prescott.
When I first came to Prescott, I was paying about a thousand dollars a month for rent. And I was so excited to finally buy a house because I agree, every cent that we were putting into was going towards the mortgage, it was going towards our equity, it was great. But at the time, the market was just recovering, we were able to afford a house that fit into our price range. Right now, I, we were just talking, I was just talking about going-away parties. A friend of mine from the Humane Society was really wanting to buy a house in Prescott and couldn't find something that was affordable for her. We should be working to try to see if we can attract developers to build affordable housing. I agree with Connie, I think that the market has a lot to do with it, but we should be trying because we're trying to attract young people, we're trying to keep them here to start their family.
Well, I agree that rents and housing prices are market-driven, so one solution to that is encourage higher-paying jobs so those young people can afford the market prices that we have. But at the same time, we do not have a housing authority, and we are missing out on millions and millions of federal dollars which could be used to build affordable housing in this community. This is not Philadelphia, it's not New York or Chicago. We can look to other smaller communities for successful examples. Flagstaff, for example, established a housing authority within the last twenty years, and their apartments are attractive, they're well-run, and they're very much appreciated. I think we can do something like that here with a housing authority. It is a separate government, and it does have the ability to accept federal grants. I think that'd be a wonderful opportunity to create affordable housing here.
All right, our next question, we'll start with Mary Beth Rinn. Mary Beth, how will you make yourself accessible to the citizens of Prescott?
I'm going to show up every day for work, that's for sure. Now, I intend to be a full-time mayor, and people, I think, you know, if you've ever approached me on the street, whether you've contacted me through my email, I'm very easy to talk to. I'm certainly willing to explain my position on issues, and that's how I intend to conduct myself in office. And I absolutely will have an open-door policy. What I also would like to do, if elected, I intend at the end of every council meeting to give an opportunity for people to speak, what I would like to call, well, maybe I'll phrase it something else, just a complaint session. Give them two minutes, they can just complain about something that's bothering them. Quick two minutes, and that's it, sit down. Tell them what's bothering them the most about the city, and so they feel like they're really connected to the process.
Well, I have a lot of avenues, I'm very available. I'm out there in the city with the business I have for thirty-eight years, I'm very visible. My phone number's in the phone book, my cellphone's on every business card I have. I'm most often at City Hall every Tuesday all day long, and I take phone calls from the city council secretary that sets up meetings where they're outside of the normal hours. I meet with them in City Hall and do that quite often. So I'm out there, I'm able to talk to you, I'm willing to talk to you, I love talking to people to see what their concerns are, and if I can certainly help you through your issues, so they become my issues, and we can talk about them.
I think, again, in my business, the availability is amazing today. Between email, texting, Twitter, you name it, we're very available. In Prescott, I am in the community. As I said, I'm a renovator, I've been very involved here in many facets of the city, between the construction industry down at the city, many of the citizens in the city. So I have absolutely no problem speaking to anybody about any issue. I have found where there's smoke, there's fire. When many people come to you and they start to complain about something, it bears looking into. So that is what I do best, I'm a problem solver, and I would love to be able to have an opportunity to serve in that capacity.
Well, I'm retired, and I have the ability to commit literally full-time to the responsibilities of the council. I'm involved in a wide variety of community organizations, veteran service organizations. Many people comment that, gee, you seem to be everywhere. Well, I will continue to be accessible during the course of a four-year term and beyond. So you can reach me through my email, voicemail, Facebook accounts, and I think I'm very responsive to the people who've reached out so far, and I would expect that to continue and even get broader. Thank you.
You know, I consider myself someone who's very open-minded, and I will listen to anyone who wants to talk to me, even if their opinion's greatly different from mine. And in fact, I purposefully seek out opinions that differ from my own so that I'm constantly questioning and challenging myself. You know, and I promise not to be one of those elected officials who refuse to interact with their constituents. I will be constantly reaching out to constituents and really want to get a pulse on what's going on in Prescott. And I am a millennial, so feel free to tweet at me anytime.
So I think approachability is incredibly important, and I want to be available to everyone. And in fact, every Friday now, I'm hosting a Cup of Joe with Joe. This Friday, I'd like to invite everybody here, I offer free coffee, though I'm not sure if I have it in my campaign budget for everybody. But I offer free coffee, it's a chance for everyone to get, come, talk to me, tell me your priorities, tell me what you think is important. I really want to know. Every, the business cards that I have out on the front table, they go directly to my cellphone. You can call me, I'm more than willing to talk to you. I think it's incredibly important you're able to get ahold of us. Cup of Joe with Joe is going to be at Wild Iris, eleven-thirty to two on Friday, Grand Street.
Well, I too am retired, and I'm willing to devote full-time to the job, whatever it takes. Although, I am not going to be a micromanager in the city, that's the job of a city manager, but I will be available to people who want to come to City Hall, or call me, or email me, and I intend to have informal gatherings around the city in different venues, the same way that our city manager has opened office hours at the library, and our police chief has coffee with a cop. I would like to do something similar as mayor when I'm elected.
Well, I think as an elected representative of the city, it's very important that we are available and accessible to you, the citizens of Prescott. So this would be very important to me. I think I've demonstrated this pretty well as an elected official currently, sitting as the Prescott president of as the Prescott President of the Prescott School Board, where we have to demonstrate the ability to listen and be open-minded and hear what the public and the students and teachers and parents have to say about our schools. I think on my Facebook, you can see there that my response time, when people will message me, is under an hour or something like that. My business card has my cellphone on it, my email, I'm happy to respond to all those requests or thoughts or considerations that you might have. Furthermore, I have complete support from my current camp board to do whatever it takes to be successful as your mayor.
All right, well, before we have our closing remarks from each of our candidates, I want to take a moment to, first of all, recognize the sponsors of tonight's event. The Arizona Association, American Association of University Women, the Prescott Arizona Branch, the Citizens Tax Committee, the League of Women Voters of Central Yavapai County, and the Prescott Chamber of Commerce. I want to especially say thank you to Nettie Lamerson and Terry Farnetti, Lynn Murphy, and Ellie Lawmark, who along with myself worked as the planning committee for tonight's event. Thank you all very much for your efforts tonight. I also want to mention that the Performing Arts Center tonight has been provided to us by Yavapai College. Also, the printing of your program tonight was provided free of charge by our friends at Sir Speedy Printing. And also a thank you to Prescott Media Center for taping the event tonight. So those are the thank yous. Each candidate is going to be afforded two minutes to make a closing statement. We're going to start with our city council candidates, and the first closing remark goes to Steve Blair.
I love being first. Thank you for being here, first of all. I appreciate you spending your time here tonight. I know there's a lot of other probably important things you'd rather be doing. I am running for council. I am an incumbent. I was born and raised here in Prescott. I have four kids, two biological, one stepson, and one adopted son. I only have one wife. I'm here in the community, I have a very successful business of 37 years. I have the passion and the desire to continue to make Prescott everybody's hometown. I've seen the past, I'm living in the present, and I have an eye on the future, and I still have the energy to want to serve the people of the city of Prescott. So I ask for your vote. Thank you for being here.
Well, as a member of Prescott, and having been in Prescott, my parents moved here in the early '70s, and then I, of course, left and went to college and raised a family and started a business. Couldn't wait to get out, couldn't wait to get back when I approached my age of retirement. But what happened, I think, for me, when I came back to Prescott and moved right downtown on Pleasant Street, I was very disappointed, as I've said over and over again, about the way the streets had decayed, and some of these very important historical structures down here had fallen into disrepair. You know, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out, what's going on, how is this happening? I remember a time walking these streets with my now-32-year-old son in a baby carriage, up and down the streets. Every house had pride of ownership, every home was owned by a family, and a lot of the families had vacated the downtown area because of various reasons. I would like to be a part of a council that has a little different vision, again, making us whole. We have satisfied the retirement part of the city, a part of it, as I've said. I think we need to go after the other parts of this puzzle so that we can make sure that we're economically viable going on into the history. So I have participated in putting back our city. I'm now on my eighth and ninth renovation in the downtown area, specifically in the historic important properties. I'm the person that's renovated the former church on the street buildings on the corner of Cortez and Carlton. Those were very, very important to me because that church happens to be one of the oldest churches in Prescott from the 1800s. So again, I'm going to plod forward, whether or not I get on the council. I would like to be able to have a very important part in turning the city around and preserving our history, enhancing it for our tourists who pay a lot of our money here. We've got to take care of this stuff, we need to prioritize our streets, and get on the ball, basically, and get our neighborhoods back. Thank you, and I hope you vote on August 29th for me. Thanks a lot.
I realize that this is a nonpartisan position, and I honor that. It doesn't take a Democrat or Republican to fix potholes or make sure our water is clean and our sewers work. But I think it's important that you understand the principles that I believe in, and I would apply to decisions on positions both now and in the future. I believe in limited government, I believe in low taxes. I believe that we need to protect the best interests of the taxpayer. Governments should only provide essential services, and we should honor the private sector to fill in the economic drivers that we need to have a viable, long-term community. I don't just state my principles, I live them. I'm concerned about growth, and I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the last two years studying growth and making decisions about growth. I'm concerned about water resource management. I've been on the Public Policy Committee for the Citizens Water Advocacy Group, studying that issue. We haven't talked about this over living rehab home situation here in the city, but I served as the co-chairman of that city committee, and we've done a substantial job reducing the impact of that issue on our neighborhoods, and it needs to continue. I've spent 35 years in senior healthcare management, managing large budgets, large staffs, in a regulatory environment, and been very successful in that career path. So you can expect well-reasoned, well-researched decisions that'll be in the best interest of the community. I spent six years serving the United States very proudly, and I'd like the opportunity to serve the city and the citizens of Prescott. I humbly ask for your vote.
Quickly, before I get to my closing remarks, I want you all to get an opportunity to know me and my background and why I love Prescott so much. My family and I moved here just two weeks after I was born, returning to the town where my grandfather grew up. And I was involved in civics from a very young age. When I was eight or nine, my grandfather did some genealogy, and we discovered that we're direct descendants of a founding father, George Reed of Delaware, who signed the Declaration of Independence as well as the Constitution of these United States. And I feel a calling from that, and it's in my blood. And not only did he sign the Declaration and the Constitution, he was admitted to the Philadelphia Bar at age 19, the same age I am today. When I was a junior in high school, I really got involved in local politics. I was asked to serve on a board, which is currently creating a memorial for the 19th Grand Mountain Hotshots down on the Courthouse Plaza. And we have worked closely with the city and county to achieve that, and so we are still in the process, and it's been an incredible honor to work on that board for the last four years. I currently commute two days a week to the Honors College at Arizona State, Go Devils, and I study political science and Spanish. And so I know that I can balance being on city council with my schoolwork, no problem. That's my job right now, as well as some of the other council people have their jobs, and my job just happens to be school. And so the challenges we're facing as a community are unique, and it's times like these where sitting back and doing what we normally have done in the past isn't going to cut it. I feel that I have some fresh ideas and a fresh perspective to offer to our city council, my hometown where I have no intentions of leaving. And so I'm asking for your vote for Alexis Scholl, for Prescott City Council, when your ballots arrive, it'll be just a little over a week.
So I want to first tell you guys, thank you so much for being here. This is an incredible crowd for a city council and municipal election. It's incredible to see, and I think the more people that get involved in this process is the best Prescott we can have. So I'm from, like I said, from Pennsylvania. I had a career in banking before I came out here, came out here for Amber Riddle. I've seen that we're not trying to keep young people in town, and I wanted to change that. With the incredible budget experience I have, with the flight hours, most of my flight hours, by the way, were out of Amber Riddle, so seeing Prescott from that perspective is something I would recommend everybody here get a chance to see. We have a lot of issues in Prescott. We have water, we have PSPRS. All of these things are solvable, and I think with all of you in the room, with the people up here, we have the opportunity to do that. Everybody adding their input into it has a chance to make the best possible decisions on all these issues, and I'm so grateful that we have a chance to do that. So I hope that you vote for Joe Vichika for Prescott City Council. I'm the only Joe on the ballot, as we see up here, so Joe might be the best way to go. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight.
Now, we're going to hear from our three mayoral candidates, starting with Jean Wilcox.
Thank you, Sanford. After four years of serving on the city council, I feel like I am the best qualified, best prepared of all the candidates to serve as your mayor. My entire life has been devoted to public service, growing up in an army family, seeing my father serve his country, and then later, as a Lutheran minister, serving congregations. And almost every job I've had has been in government, local government. I spent 19 years in Coconino County, so I'm very familiar with Arizona laws and Arizona government. And in my four years on the council, I have gone through four budget cycles. I understand the processes, protocols, I know the people, the issues, and it's easy for me to spot the places where I need to ask questions and get verification and clarification. I found that there's at least a two-year learning curve when you first get on the council. I won't have that learning curve as a mayor because of my experience. I have a good working relationship with the city manager, and he'll make the job of mayor very, very easy. Most importantly, I care about my community, and I care about the future and the young people who want to live here. I envision a Prescott that will be a place for young people to thrive and older people to continue to enjoy all the amenities that we now have. Thank you.
I am the most qualified candidate to be your next mayor. I grew up in small towns in Kansas, so I understand small-town values, values like hard work and taking responsibility for your actions, and fiscal responsibility, and being a good neighbor and understanding what that means. My educational background qualifies me because I have a resource management degree from Kansas State University. This degree gives me a foundation to better understand how to manage natural resources, human resources, and financial resources. My business experience at United Christian Youth Camp will help guide me to lead our great city. I've worked over two decades at three camps in town where we started with just a $400,000 annual revenue, and now we have over $4 million of revenue annually. We have over 200 employees, and we see some 25,000 guests every year. I understand what it takes to lead to that change, I understand what it takes to lead to that growth and to meet a payroll. And I believe that business experience is very, very important. Finally, my position as the president of the Prescott School Board gives me the public service experience it will take to lead our great city and to be your next mayor. But beyond all that, I believe the most important qualifier for me is my proven leadership, both in the schools as well as leading the camps. Proven leadership where when I find people on opposite sides of an issue, I can help find common ground, I can build consensus, I can help create solutions and strategies to reach a common goal. And I believe that proven leadership is the most important reason why I should be your next mayor. I am Greg Mingerelli, I love Prescott, I understand Prescott, and I will preserve Prescott, the Prescott we all love.
That was my closing argument. I can't talk about that because of this. This is a $15,000 mail paid by the Firefighters Union. I'm sure every one of you sitting in here received this. I can't defend it, there's nothing to defend. I am not being sued by anyone, nor that I ever not pay a bill. They have other hit pieces against me because I dared to speak out against their pensions. So everyone in here can decide how this election will be decided. There is no one that has worked harder for this city than I have. I've drafted the preliminary legislation for the structural silver living homes, and I spent over two years studying PSPRS to try to decide how we can get a solution to this problem. And right now, there's getting solutions, right now as they speak. The president of the Senate is actually talking about removing the pension clause so we can actually have solutions, so this city will not be choked off by the debt rate we're struggling under every day. Because a sales tax will not solve this, and the pension board has historical data of 24 years, they're not investing their way out. And you need a mayor that's going to be able to take on the unions. There's no one here that has the courage to do it. I already am, and this is what I get. So the other hit pieces that come out, my phone number's on the card out front. Call me, I'll answer to every one of them. I have nothing to hide from you or anyone else because I'm working for you, the hard-working taxpayer. And that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Well, I want to compliment all of our candidates for the great job that they did here tonight, and under the lights and so forth. You have to admit that we have some great people here running for office, and we should all give a round of applause for their performance. And on behalf of the Prescott Chamber of Commerce, go out there and stimulate our economy. Have a great night, thank you very much, everyone.